Welcome, everybody. Appreciate your patience tonight as our closed session ran a little long. We have a prayer led by Councilwoman Laura Ward followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here this evening. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we are grateful. May we, may, excuse me, may we be mindful of the outcome of our decisions and may our intentions align with the goodwill of all in our city. We ask that you protect our police, firefighters, EMTs, and military servicemen and women as they serve and protect us. We are thankful for their dedication and sacrifice to our city and country. May our decisions help to address the needs and issues that will keep both our citizens and emergency personnel safe. As we bid farewell to 2019, we are thankful for our many blessings, but we must also not forget the continued hardships weighing heavy on those who are still in need of affordable housing. We pray for the compassion, understanding, and strength to continue our tornado recovery efforts in this new year. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of the entire city. Guide us to be the leaders our community needs and desires. In your name we pray.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I'll now call to order the Monday, January 6, 2020 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kemna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda by adding item 7D, which is a taxi update.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items, we have a census update. Like to welcome Katrina to the podium. Katrina Williams, welcome.
Thank you. I'm just going to give a brief update on the 2020 census and our efforts in preparing for it. So Katrina Williams, I work within the Planning Division. It's part of our Planning and Protective Services Department, and I've been tasked with being the liaison for our 2020 census efforts for the city. I have a partner who works for Cole County, Melissa Johnson, so she's a liaison for Cole County, and we've formed a joint Census Complete Count Committee, Cole County-Jefferson City 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, which is a long title. And we're having a meeting January 13 at 9:00 a.m. here in these council chambers. You should have a flyer and some other poster materials that I've set out for all of you, and I have a few extras back here behind me. And we just want to let you know that we're having the meeting. I know you all understand, I hope you understand how important the census is and that we get a really good count. The committee has been formed for two main reasons, to increase the accuracy of the 2020 census count within Cole County, special focus on those areas that have historically been undercounted. And we've done pretty well in the 10 years ago, and also to raise awareness about temporary employment opportunities during the 2020 census. We put out a call for volunteers to participate in the committee in early December, and we have about 11 or 12 people on that committee so far. Hopefully, it's going to continue to grow a little bit. These members include representatives from local governments, elected officials, community service providers, faith-based organizations, school districts, and healthcare providers. And again, I want to reiterate that our meeting, our first complete count committee meeting is going to be held January 13 at 9:00 a.m. in these council chambers. If you want more information, you can go to 2020census.gov, that's the federal website, or you can go to a county website that we set up specifically for our complete count committee, and that's www.colecounty.org/2020census. If you'd like to join the committee, which we invite any and all people if they're interested in it, you can contact us. We have an email address set up specifically for this. It's 2020completecount@colecounty.org, or you can call us directly at 573-634-6536. Do you all have any questions?
Do you have any questions? We appreciate your work on the census and look forward to the complete count committee meeting on January 13.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Item five, no public hearings. Item six, appointments by the mayor, Mrs. Stroh.
Thank you. So we have four appointments recommended this evening, two to the Convention and Visitors Bureau's Brian Bernsketter and Cynthia Schneiders, and two to the Historic Preservation Commission, Brad Schaefer and Gail Jones. And I would like to point out that the appointment for Cynthia Schneiders to the CVB, this would be her third full term, so it will require two-thirds majority approval of the council.
Okay, any questions about that? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff, oh, yes, Councilman Mahalovich. Did we skip over the port?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you were telling me, Carlos. Okay. So, Gail, item A, please.
Well, that would be an appointment of Ann Pardalos to the Port Authority appointment, or to the Port Authority.
All right. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So thank you for approving that, and we appreciate all of our board and committee volunteers. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We have with us Mr. Mike Parks to present an update on the Columbia Regional Airport. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I created a short PowerPoint just to kind of go through a little bit of everything that's going on at the Columbia Airport. There's a lot of exciting projects and also growth at the airport. You should have an employment handout with you in your packet. We'll go through the catchment area and how it's changed, really what it was before and what it is now. Also talk about the passenger growth chart and how we compare to other regional airports in the central region. Also talk about air service providers. So going into the, if you look at your employment data, going all the way back to 2007, really in comparison to today, in the entire year, we had 9,000 people fly out of the airport. In comparison to today, this year, we'll have over 131,000 people fly out. So 260,000-plus users of the airport in 2019. Of course, we anticipate more growth for 2020. But going through each year, you can see the growth and the use of people flying into Columbia as well. Looking at, maybe I didn't go, here we go. So looking at the catchment area, so the people that use the airport and the growth that we've had, we were, just five years ago, we were at about a 14-county catchment area. So we reached out passengers, the majority of our passengers were from that 14-county catchment area. Fast-forwarded today, and we're at about a 17-county catchment area with about over 700,000 users in that catchment area, so that use the airport itself. With that, to the right side on the presentation, there's a passenger growth chart. Really what that's doing is comparing Columbia to other regional airports in the central region. So it's looking at, the red line there shows Columbia and our growth from 2010 to 2019, but it also compares us to Manhattan, Grand Island, Sioux City, Dubuque, Garden City, and Waterloo. So other airports that are comparable to Columbia and I guess similar size in the area. So the projects at, projects at the airport itself, so we have not only growth in infrastructure at the airport to be able to keep up with all of our passenger growth. With that, of course, everybody knows that our terminal was built in the '60s. We're in a dire need for a new terminal, of course, with the size and the growth that we have now compared to what we had before. We have a lot of projects that are happening before our terminal, so we're currently working on the terminal, and I'll talk about that. But in the meantime, on the picture there, you can see where the current hangar is. That current hangar is in the location for our future terminal. So our current project is, is we bid out a new hangar, we'll be relocating that hangar to the north end of the field. In that location where the current hangar is at, that'll be demolished, and then that'll be the location of our future terminal. So in comparison to size, it's kind of hard to see up there, but in comparison to size, our current terminal is about 16,000 square feet. Our new terminal is expected to be just a little bit over 60,000 square feet, so about four times the size. The other projects that we have, really in preparation for the terminal to be completed, we also have, if you've been in the area, we've relocated a county highway up there to the east. With that moving to the east, that'll allow for the extension of our primary runway. The primary runway will go from 6,500 feet to 7,400 feet, which will allow for larger aircraft, possibly cargo aircraft in the future and things like that, increased landing distance and takeoff distance. We also have the, we also are building a new taxi lane up north and a new apron for the hangar itself that we're building up there. And everything should be completed about the end of 2021, just right before the terminal project itself. So talking about the timeline of the terminal, we have a large amount of interest in building the terminal, of course. I said it's about four times the size of our current facility. We issued a letter of interest on October 18, and with that letter of interest, we had 10 companies, 10 teams come forward with an interest in our terminal. The RFQ was issued on November 8, and we ended up with eight companies that ended up with the RFQ, and we had a meet and greet for DBE interest and so forth. And with that, we have narrowed it down to seven. So we actually have a meeting on, we have a meeting on Wednesday. Our selection team is going to meet on Wednesday and go over all the RFQs events submitted. So it'll be those seven teams that we'll be looking over. And the sealed prize proposals will be opened up in May, and we anticipate bringing the award to the Airport Advisory Board first on June 1 is what we intend to do. We'll bring it to the advisory board before the City Council meeting on June 1 is what we intend to do. So it'll be a three-phased approach with our new terminal. It's a $20 million first phase, and then we'll move into the subsequent phases after that. So with that said, we have a lot of meetings and try to get a lot of public input about the terminal, the terminal, air service, really anything to do with the airport. So we have, the third Thursday of each month, we have an airport meeting. We ask the public to come in. There's no presentation. We come in, anyone wants to ask questions about air service that we have, or the terminal, or any other capital projects that we have, we invite them into the Walton Building at 300 West Broadway. And of course, we also like to go to other communities. So we come down here to Jefferson City, all the other surrounding communities in that catchment area to talk to everyone. But with that, we appreciate your partnership. I tried to go through there pretty fast, but we appreciate your partnership and appreciate the opportunity to come up here and, or come down here and give you an update on the happenings at the airport, so.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, for that informative update, and the Columbia Regional Airport is such an asset to mid-Missouri and especially to Jefferson City, so we appreciate hearing the latest report on that. Does Council have any questions or comments? Councilman Mahalovich?
I currently serve as a liaison appointed by the mayor, so in a quick four months, you all can, if you'd like to travel to Columbia every other, one Wednesday a month for the advisory, it's real informative, and they treat us well up there.
They do. That's great, and we appreciate your service on that commission. Councilman Fitzwater?
I just had a couple of questions, and I did want to say that I account for about eight of those increases. I finally moved my air travel there. I found it very pleasant, the short drive was very nice. Looking forward to the new terminal. The terminal, it doesn't look like it has the overhead ramps or the enclosed ramps, so will the process be similar to what you currently have as far as boarding the planes?
So the new terminal will have boarding bridges. We'll have three jet bridges on opening day.
So that just don't show up on the drawing, or did I miss it?
It really didn't. It just depict the box, the box itself where the terminal be. But yeah, there'll be three jet bridges, so you won't have to, you won't have to walk outdoors anymore to the airplane, so.
Second question, you may not be able to answer. Are there any other airlines being considered now?
So I think we, that's a great question. We're always talking to airlines. So we go down in March every year, we talk to their current airlines, so American and United. We talk to them about their current flights, about expanding their flights that they already have. We also really talk to additional airlines and talk to low-cost carriers, whether, and talk to the current. So with that said, there's no announcements, but I think there's always interest in expanding the flights that we have in future destinations. So I think with the new terminal, it'll be a lot more, because the options will be a lot more available to Columbia, I would say, with more room.
So related to that, will the current airlines maybe expand the number of flights in here? Is that what, is a possibility?
I think that's always a possibility, yeah, with more room. So they have flights to Chicago, Denver, and Dallas now. Every single one of those flights is doing really well. Of course, it's the airline's decision on whether to expand those flights, but as they're filling the flights, we anticipate that they'll add more flights in the future.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Well, before you leave, if you'd like to come forward, we'll get a picture, and that way we can share out what we are working on together and showing Jefferson City and Columbia working together and the importance of our airport and getting the word out. And Councilman Mahalovich, as the liaison, if you would come up front here too, and if Council would come.
It might be worth noting that Mike was the only one that said he could make it for the last council meeting we canceled.
He actually, he actually said he could, yes. That's dedication. And I also have a miscellaneous agenda item here. I'd like to call Mr. David Bangy to the podium. And as you might have recently heard, that David has, he accomplished riding 8,000-plus bike miles. Was that just last year alone?
Yeah, last year.
Just in one year, last year alone?
Eight thousand one hundred and fifty.
Eight thousand one hundred and fifty.
That's right, who's counting?
So I think that deserves some recognition from the City Council. That's kind of a big deal. So I have some things to mention here. From a city perspective, David, our city engineer, has so much firsthand knowledge of biking that he translates that into the city's bike and pedestrian infrastructure, such as the design of our bike lanes, sidewalks, and greenways. I know you were instrumental in that. David is truly the region's expert on bicycle infrastructure design. David also uses his free time to promote bicycling in the community. He is a certified bicycle instructor and has hosted multiple events to impart his knowledge to others. He organizes bicycle rides for all levels of users. He started and leads Bicycle Club at Elias High School. He has organized and led bike rides for the city's wellness program and bike share programs. David has overseen the design of essentially all of the cities' on-street and shared-use bike lanes and much of the city's greenway and sidewalk design construction that has occurred since he began work at the city in 2003. Through his efforts, the city received recognition as a bicycle-friendly community bronze level from the League of American Cyclists. Because of his efforts, the city can successfully compete for events like the upcoming Boondoggle Bicycle Event that will be coming to our town this next summer, whatever that is, and draws many visitors from the city, from the Katy Trail. The city has approximately 15 miles of greenway and 10 miles of sign-stripped on-bike lanes. So 8,000-plus miles, that is quite an accomplishment in one year, and I think that deserves some congratulations. So tell us a little bit about what inspires you to ride every day.
Oh, my goodness. What it is, it is kind of a daily commitment. I mean, to get to 8,000, it's, you know, it starts off with about 30-ish miles a day, but I don't know. It started off 10 years ago with just, you know, trying to be a bit healthier, and then it's just really neat how, you know, those two things, the bicycling and what I do here at the city sort of combine together. It's just really kind of a neat thing to be able to enjoy both of those things kind of simultaneously and how they work together. So just really neat. It's really neat to see, you know, you're a part of the community when you're out there on a bike. It's really neat, you know, to see people out on the greenway trail and you have a chance to say hello to them, you know, rather than passing them by quickly in a car. It's kind of a completely different experience, and you get to meet different people, which is really kind of cool. And it is a nice group of people that you get to meet, you know, in those situations. So just really happy that those things get to work together like that.
Well, we are very proud of you. So what is this Boondoggle Bicycle Event that's coming next summer?
Well, actually, it's the Jamboree, which is, right.
Oh, the Jamboree, the Pedler's Jamboree.
The Pedler's Jamboree, and so that will happen on Memorial Day. Usually, they go from Columbia up towards Boonville, but with the bridge being out on the Katy Trail. And I think Councilman Kemna was very interested in discussing an event like that. It just so happened that they were looking for a new place to go since they couldn't make it to Boonville, and so it just so happened that they were coming to Jeff City, "We're going to spend the night over at the prison," so it should really be a really cool event. So that happens on Memorial Day weekend.
Great. And another item not on the list is the mayor's bike ride. I know you've done that as well.
Ah, yes. That's right. So yes, the first mayor's bike ride happened on Black Friday a couple of years ago, so we rode around downtown so early. Please thank you, Mayor, for participating in that.
Well, we'll have to do another one, but I don't know about that 8,000. I can never quite get to that.
It starts at one mile at a time.
That's right. So as we all begin the new year, that's something definitely to aspire to, or just to get out and ride a little bit on some of our bike lanes in Jefferson City.
Yeah. So, you know, it's kind of nice. It's the, just the way that all came to be. Sort of the timing was just fortuitous in terms of, you know, my getting involved, and it seems like the community is anxious for something like that. And being, I think it, you know, it welcomes more and different people into our city. And so certainly the Katy Trail, the opening of the bridge back in 2008, I think it was, you know, certainly all those things kind of combined to make this happen, you know. It's, and so, yeah, I think it's very fortuitous in terms of the timing, so.
Well, great job. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Bangy? Okay. If not, I would like to encourage you for your next 8,000 miles. So I think by riding that many miles, we'll present you with a city coin today in recognition of all those miles, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The picture, so he can come on up. Okay. Item 7B, Diane Gillespie is going to present the Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau 2020 Budget. Welcome, Mrs. Gillespie.
Thank you very much. So you all should have the budget in front of you, and I'm looking on the one that has the 2019 and the proposed 2020 budget, the comparison form. I don't know which, I sent both of them to you all. I'm just going to kind of briefly go through this. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Go to the other document. We can go through this one if you want. Yeah, this one's fine. It's on, it's on the front. So the one that you're looking at will break him down into line item. So this is all of our revenue items that are coming in, revenue money. Room tax is at 519,000. That is a 2% increase over this year's budget. And a total revenue for the year will be 1.3, 300,000. And then you have the payroll expenses, which will be on the next page. If you could, there you go. So you see the total revenue, and then we have a payroll, which is a 23% of the budget. The next would be administrative and general expenses. This one, there is an increase on our computer and support services line 6220. We are going to have to do new computers for our office, so we will have that expense coming onboard this year for us. So there is an increase in that item. That is up to 11% of our budget for the year. The marketing is probably the biggest item that we have in the Bureau. The amount stayed about the same as it did for this year. We just reallocated some of the items around so that we could include additional advertising for MSP and Jefferson City. So as you know, we were closed down for several months this year, and we were able to get up and going for October and November. We had great revenue numbers, but we know we're going to have to do some additional advertising to get the word out that we are back and going. Plus, we are adding a couple other sites to that tour, so we hope to increase the marketing on it. So the marketing for us will be 727,000. It's about 56% of our total budget. So that's kind of the highlights of it. Is there any questions or questions you would like to ask?
Any questions for Mrs. Gillespie? And I noticed you also have Carol Burkhead.
I do have Carol Burkhead, who is Burkhead and Associates, which is our accounting firm that assists us. If you have any questions, she will be glad to answer. I know she would.
And thank you, Mrs. Burkhead, for your work with that board, and...
And Rick is on our liaison, so I'm sure he could answer any questions if you have.
Well, it's very impressive what you do with a small budget and staff. You all do a lot of work to bring visitors here, and despite the challenges with the prison after the tornado, you all worked so very hard to get that back up and going and resume tours. It's been very successful.
Yes. We had a great turnout for October, November. We were about 1,000, I think it was, a little bit, about 1,000 people less for October than what we did in October of 2018, and I think we were seven less for November. So knowing that we opened up the tours, the third, I guess it was the second week of September, that was a pretty good turnaround. We had to cancel all of our private tours, so we weren't able to capture those back, so. But the public enjoyed the opportunity to get back in.
Mr. Councilman Mahalovich?
I think there's two things maybe noteworthy, is very few CVBs run an attraction. I don't know if there are any that run an attraction.
There is none.
So that's, that's a uniqueness of this CVB. They do a great job. The other thing is the money that's made through the tours and the MSP grounds gets plowed right back into that facility, and there's a significant amount of dollars that go from those revenues back into the facilities for roof repairs now.
Yes.
And other site improvements.
Correct. Yeah, all the projects that we do over at MSP are paid for by the net profits off the tours. Lodging tax is not used for those repairs and for that site over there. And same for the advertising. Anything else?
And although tours have stopped for the winter, the museum, the MSP museum located at your offices, they're at the corner of Lafayette and Capitol Avenue, the museum is still open, is that certain days now?
Correct. Yes, we're open during the week right now. We will open up on the weekends when we start tours up back in March and April.
Okay. So if you haven't, I would encourage everyone to see the, that basement museum if you haven't already.
Yes, it's good.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Ryan, do we have any action? Do we need to make a motion to approve the budget at this time, or is this just the update?
I believe that a motion to approve the budget is appropriate.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the CVB budget?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. And item C, Historic Preservation Plan Update. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A little bit more than a year ago, our Planning Division loaned out one of our planners to our Neighborhood Services Division to help with a historic preservation plan. So Anna is one of our planners, right behind me. She's been the public face of this and has been working diligently with the consultant, and I'm sure she hopes this is going to be the last time she gives this presentation, but she's here to do so right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sunny. As mentioned, I'm here to discuss the Jefferson City Historic Preservation Plan, and this is our tool to guide historic preservation throughout the city. And a few things I'm going to mention before I get into the content is that since adopting this plan, it doesn't automatically force anything to change. So any implementation strategy that I address tonight, or that you might read in the plan, it will... it will go through all the appropriate public and, you know, procedural processes to come to fruition. And this is also everyone's plan, whether you're on the Historic Preservation Commission, city councils, city staff, other historic preservation stakeholders, the public. We can all use this plan to spearhead and guide historic preservation efforts. Okay, the roll bar. Sorry, excuse me. So this is a timeline that describes our process for the plan. As Sunny mentioned, this started in late 2018, where we released an RFP and selected consultants' heritage strategies to develop the plan. City staff and the consultants have gone through all of the appropriate processes to develop this plan, including research and analysis, community engagement, drafting and reviewing the plan, and then putting the plan in front of the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation and final approval. A few more notes about the community engagement, because I really want to drive home about the amount of people that were involved in creating this plan. We formed the Historic Preservation Plan Focus Group to help guide the planning process and keep stakeholders and the public involved. We also have held several interest group sessions, and those helped form the planning themes for the plan, and I'll get more into those later. Then we also had several public meetings and kept the Historic Preservation Commission involved through this whole process. Now, plans are naturally very multi-dimensional. They're built with this latter in mind to guide wants into action. So I am going to go over these three things in this order to showcase the contents of the plan. First being the vision statement. This was created by our consultants through their understanding of our history and where they see that the community wants to go. A big takeaway is that bold statement that states we value the physical and spiritual connections between the places we create today and the places created by our forbearers. So a good guiding essence for the plan and historic preservation efforts in Jefferson City. Now, a few highlights for the goals. The first goal is all about quality of place. And for example, the Jefferson City Downtown has a very distinct quality of place in the sense of the way it looks, the way we value it, and our Jefferson City culture. The second goal emphasizes living and investing in our historic neighborhoods. The third goal highlights connections. So we don't want the benefits of historic preservation to be isolated when a valued amenity is connected property, and there's rippling effects of positive benefits throughout the whole community. The fourth goal highlights city programs and its role in encouraging historic preservation. And then lastly, the last goal is about identity. You know, think of it as brand recognition, the way our residents and visitors view Jefferson City and can interact with Jefferson City as a distinct place. Now the strategies. As I mentioned before, there are several planning themes involved with these strategies. And this was created to help organize and categorize all of the strategies within the plan. The first strategy theme is general historic preservation. And this is about coordinating historic preservation tools with various resources to help promote revitalization and enhancement. A few of those strategies listed in the plan involve continued participation in the certified local government program, also continued architectural surveys throughout the community. One was just done for the US Main Neighborhood, continuing to identify local landmarks, and also providing more information and resources about the appropriate ways to treat historic properties. So this education piece is all about empowering property owners to invest and rehabilitate properties. Planning and development is the next strategy theme, and this involves coordinating preservation efforts with the city's planning programs. A few recommendations within this planning theme involves incorporating the historic preservation plans' goals for quality of place and community identity into the new comprehensive plan update. Also strengthening parks, trails, greenway systems in Jefferson City. And again, back to education. That's going to be a running theme throughout this whole plan because the consultants felt like there needs to be more common understanding of our building codes and building regulations. Again, so property owners feel like they have the appropriate information to invest in properties. Next strategy theme is commercial centers and how those are significant for economic development. A few strategies within that theme involve strengthening the Main Street approach. Oh, I apologize. The plan also recommends that the downtown area has an overlay district, similar to what Capitol Avenue has, and that a multi-site CID be developed. And this would encompass a whole bunch of our small historic nodes throughout the city. The Dunkland Street, Old Munichburg area, they currently have a CID, and they use this tool to help fund like sidewalk and infrastructure programs. The fourth strategy theme is historic neighborhoods, how our historic neighborhoods will be the center for distinctively attractive and living spaces. A few of the recommendations within that section involve developing neighborhood associations and design guidelines, back to education, so that a neighborhood, they can feel connected to each other and their physical surroundings, and then empower each other through design guidelines to help maintain a certain standard of look for their neighborhood. And then the last strategy theme involves tourism and how it can be used for revitalization and economic development, continuing to promote a wayfinding and signage system throughout our community. We already have a good one, but branching that throughout Jefferson City helps residents and tourists identify landmarks. And then keeping up with the culture of having local historians and historic stakeholders be involved in research and documentation and other historic projects throughout the city because it helps keep our story alive. So the Historic Preservation Commission, they adopted this plan on October 22nd, and they seem very excited to incorporate some of the strategies identified in the plan into sort of like their work plan, moving forward with years of service. And then also the Planning and Zoning Commission adopt this plan into the comprehensive plan on November 14th. All of this information will stay relevant as we update the comprehensive plan this year. And I have only mentioned a few highlights and a few of the strategies located within the plan, but to read the whole plan, you can visit us at City Hall. And there's also a copy listed on our website. It's overall, it's really nice that we have this tool here in Jefferson City to guide future historic preservation efforts. And I want to thank everyone who's been involved through this long process. And you can keep an eye on those two commissions as they move forward with pursuing some implementation strategies within the plan. Thank you, and I can answer any questions you might have about the document.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Anna, for that update. Appreciate it. Okay. Item 7D, we have a taxi update, and I'd like to invite Mr. Brian Wekamp. Tom Lanrew was going to join us this evening as well, but Tom was not able to be here. Councilman Mahalovich is coming over to guide you, Mr. Wekamp. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I know I spoke to both of my... First off, my name is Brian Wekamp, and I live on Linden Court here in Jefferson City. I know I spoke to both of my council members, Councilwoman Ward and Councilman Mahalovich. And I've spoke to you, Mayor Turgeon, and our city administrator. For those of you who don't know, Jeff City has no longer a 24/7 taxi service as of January the 1st. Checker Cab ceased operation last Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. And for a lot of people, that really puts us in a bind. I know we do have the rideshare services like Uber and Lyft, but with them, you're basically at... They are a good service and are beneficial, but basically there, you're at the mercy of the drivers as far as when the drivers want to be out and driving. So I just want to just emphasize the importance of and the need for... And I don't know if there's much the city council can do about it, but just the need for 24/7 service in town because you have a lot of people who don't drive for whatever reason, who might work early mornings, go to work at maybe 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, or work the late shift, or at night or weekends when the buses don't run, need to use a taxi service. And of course, then again, you have when the bars close at 1:30 in the morning, getting those patrons home safely that maybe have had too much to drink. For an example, a couple weeks ago, I went to... I was in town, and I went to someone through the Lyft app to get a Lyft to go home. And this was mid-December, about 2:30 in the afternoon, and there were no Lyft drivers out there to accept my call. So I had to wind up calling Checker Cab to get back home. And had it not been for Checker Cab working, I would have really just been stranded. So I just wanted to emphasize the need that there is a need out there for us who don't drive for 24/7 rideshare service here in town.
Thank you, Mr. Wekamp. Councilman Mahalovich?
Thank you for your efforts to be here. I know it's not easy to be here and wait for a lot of deliberations. If you bring about a concern, I think I'd be all of a concern that a cab service required by our city.
Is your mic on?
Oh, it was. A cab service required by our city requires several stipulations. One is that the vetting of the drivers are done by our police chief. So it's a value-added service. You know that they've been vetted, they have a meter in their car, they have to have placards, they have to have the proper insurance, and they have to have a minimum of three cabs and go 24/7 to be and pay their fee, I guess. I don't know if I missed anything, Ryan, and be sure to jump in. So we did... Tom, being the good citizen he is, Lanrew, who owns a Checker Cab service or did, agreed to meet with us just to explore options for the 24/7. Now, we're hopeful that there'll be some interest from out of town, folks that may want to pick up the 24/7, or even I'm hearing that there might be some individuals that would be willing to take those hours on for a period of time. But I thought... I don't know if you can characterize our meeting, Ryan, but I think there are options we could lay out there that might help some. So I don't know if you have a comment or two, Ryan?
I think that it's fair to say that the city staff is looking at options, what we can do to attract an additional taxi service to Jefferson City. Of course, we can't force anyone to provide that service and open a business in Jefferson City. But we're looking through our regulations and working with Mr. Lanrew on perhaps identifying a successor to come into town. And so I believe that I've been apprised of the importance of this type of service, and we're working to find an appropriate solution.
Councilman Graham?
Certainly, Mr. Wekamp. Thank you for being here. I totally agree with you that that is a need, that's most needed here in the city of Jefferson. Not everyone has a credit card to actually put in for Uber and Lyft. Not everyone have the accessibility to have a smartphone. Some people still have flip phones in which you cannot download the app. I hope that someone seriously picks this up, and I also hope that city staff can embrace someone who wants to pick this up and not make it a hindrance and burden, but can work with them to make it a reality. This is something that's most definitely needed in our community. A lot of us who are sitting in this room and sitting around in this chamber, we have cars. We can go to place to place. But if we want to be citizen concerned, we must address the issue as relates to not having a taxi service here in Jeff City. So I pray that someone picks that up, and I also hope that our city staff can work with whoever that may be. I know that we tried to have someone in the past, several years ago, to also bring in or do a Taxi Cab service. And from what they told me, it was a hindrance, and they were not able to come in back then. I'm just hopeful that someone picks it up because this is most definitely a need for those individuals who do not have credit cards, who cannot afford to just pick up a phone and say, "Take me to work at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning." So certainly, I'm with you, and I would be willing to have any discussion with anybody as relates to opening up that much-needed service here in Jefferson City. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear there are potential options that are being discussed. Anything else, Councilman Mahalovich? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wekamp, for being here. And Councilman Mahalovich is on his way, too. Thank you. Item 8, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Do we have any announcements for our committees? No announcements? I'll ask, so we have public works and planning. Is that still on schedule for Thursday at 7:30?
We're hopeful to have it on Thursday still. I don't know if Ken has it.
I think four of the five can make it at 7:30. I'll visit with Councilman Fitzwater after the meeting and just figure out if...
Okay.
So I think we're on schedule for 7:30, but when do we have to post?
We probably ought to post it tomorrow and get our agenda out. So if you want to announce it's at 7:30 today, then we can certainly do that tomorrow mid-morning.
Okay. Well, we'll meet at 7:30, and then Councilman Fitzwater may be joining us late for the meeting.
Okay. Any other announcements on standing committees? Any other council announcements? Councilman Fitzwater?
Just wanted to recognize that I'm sitting by Senator number 78667 from the United States JC Senate. So I think that's quite an honor for all the work that Councilwoman Wiseman has done for the JCs, and I think we ought to recognize that. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Senator. That's exciting. Good for you to represent us so well. Any other announcements? I will announce that a week from tonight, on Monday, January 13th, is the First Impact Program, and it's a program for parents and teen drivers or soon-to-be teen drivers. It talks about the Missouri's graduated driver's license laws, and the goal is to reduce motor vehicle fatalities, injuries, and crashes among teen drivers. So that is right here at the Jefferson City Police Department Training Room, and our own Sergeant Doug Rutiger is a guest speaker that night, and I will be there as well. So again, that's Monday, January 13th. There's no cost to attend, but they request RSVP just so they know if they'll have enough seats for everyone. And it is online. There's an Eventbrite that's on Facebook. You can connect with it, or you can also go to firstimpact@health.missouri.edu, I believe. Or ask me, and I'll get you the right information for that. So very valuable information for those new drivers and their parents. Item B, Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Update. This meeting's update is going to be that 2020 is the year of the Cole County Bicentennial. So not to be confused, this is Cole County's bicentennial this year, and then next year in '21 is the State of Missouri's bicentennial. So Cole County is already starting some celebrations with their commemorative ornament that the Cole County Historical Society has put out. Item 9, Lincoln University Student Update. Carolyn is not back yet. Anything to report, Mr. Graham?
Today is our first day back to work, and I think the students come back on the 13th, so.
Okay, great. Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills or Resolutions. We have signed up Mr. Mel Calau for item 13E, 201984, Bill 84. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a short statement because I'm not a very good speaker, but being a new resident... I have a short statement, because I'm not a very good speaker, but being a new resident here, only six years, I've noticed that things are good. Steve and I work on a few problems once in a while, and they're resolved. The problem that he and I talked most recently about is the buildings that are, I see, on the possibility of going to be handled at tonight's meeting. The, I'm going to call the removal of the problem at Madison and High School. And so I just want to say that, it's not there, it's here, that I don't think anybody here is pleased that it's been 18 months, and this problem is still staring us in the face every day. This community does so many things so well. It's just unbelievable. Very good representation from all departments. That problem needs to go away. And as they say on TV in the crime shows, forthwith, which means soon. So I guess there has been some legal discussions that from time to time, maybe they're no longer a problem. It appears that maybe you're ready to award a contract, which I hope that's true, knowing the efficiency of the city, then the problem will solve by the end of the month, which would be nice. So I just thought that the staff and the city needs to remove those structures forthwith. It's been long enough, 18 months. I have a small convention coming in September. God, I hope they're still not there. It'll be embarrassing, but it could be a point of history. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 11, Consent Agenda. Councilman Mahalovich?
Is there a possibility? What do we have to do to remove one of the items out of the consent to discuss? I'd like to remove item 11F to talk about separately.
So have a motion to approve maybe A through E?
I'd move to approve A through E.
All right, second to motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now, item 11F.
This, this contract came up years ago, and Capital Region had been doing this forever, it seems like, I don't know how many years. Then all of a sudden, we have this St. Louis group shows up, and I just think if you're having an employment assistance program, and you have all these providers that are handy, and at Capital Region, we should, we should continue that. Also, the nature of, of an employee assistance program is they get kind of bonded with their care providers, and I think you're going to disrupt this care providing system. You're going to an outside company in St. Louis, and Capital Region has been a very good partner throughout the years. So I would, I'd move that we go to Capital, maintain Capital Region as opposed to going to a different group out of St. Louis for this employee assistance program.
Mr. Kroll?
I'm going to ask Gail. I know this one firm was trying to get Capital Region on as a provider. I don't know if they've been able to make that happen yet, or if they've had that discussion. Do you have any update on that?
I don't have an update as to, I don't, I don't know that they, they have, and they even put in their proposal that they would try to get Capital Region within their network. So they do have a network of, I think, 23 providers in the central Missouri area, so they have a lot of the providers in Jefferson City, but they do not have Capital Region, at least at the time of the proposal, they did not.
So Councilman Mahalovich, was that a motion to?
Yes. The motion is to approve the employee assistance program by Capital Region of Jefferson City.
Is there a second? Mrs. Stroke, could you tell us where that is, or give us a?
I saw that, I saw that, the price, I saw that's the minimum, three points, that they have, or, we have, they, they do about PAS's program. What? Going on? What is happening? What?
Well, Ms. Stroke could probably explain a little bit about PAS program, how that would work, if that would be helpful. Is that what you're, no?
No, the motion though is to, to, that, that.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Well, you know, was this discussed at administration?
No.
And I kind of take a little exception to be thrown into the, this, this part of the agenda, because if I don't be real careful, I look over this consent. But we've had this discussion years ago when we did this, and we had people from Capital Region here making appeals for it to continue and talk about their care, and talk about how many clients they have that, that may not have that same caregiver. It just, they made a very compelling argument, but to have this in the consent and not have it go through a committee, especially of the detail, maybe, maybe a more appropriate motion, since that one seemed to fail, is to have it reviewed by the admin committee.
So would council be okay with pulling that off?
I lost sort of my appeal, so I'm kind of standing on my own there.
How would we, since that's a consent item, how would we pull that off for future consideration?
The council could take a vote to move it to a committee. I think that'd probably be the, consistent with Mr. Mahalovich's statement.
Okay. Would you like to? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor with no second, so that, do you want to make a motion to take this to admin?
I feel uncomfortable doing that. I think the chair of the admin needs to be sold on that being an item that they'd want to take up in admin.
Or, or people from that committee?
Councilwoman Wiseman?
I don't, I don't have a problem taking it up in admin, so my lack of motion is not for that. It's just, I think last time we discussed it in a consent agenda format, because I believe I was on council, I think, I think it was three years ago that we discussed this, because, and then Councilwoman Hussey had a, had a question about why it was awarded to PAS instead of Capital Region. So I'm, I'm not sure that I'm opposed to just voting on that tonight.
Councilman Graham?
I know, I totally agree with you, Councilman Mahalovich. The only reason why I'm not going to second is because I serve as the vice president for the board of directors for Cap Region Hospital, so I would not be voting on this. That's the only reason why I'm not seconding your, your motion.
So at this point, we just have item F to vote on as a consent item unless there's a motion made otherwise to either change that or take it to committee. Councilwoman Ward?
Besides the cost, the difference in the cost, what was the reasoning for that choice? Is the service, have you been having problems with current service?
Yeah, no, we definitely have not had any problems with the current service with Capital Region. I think some of the other reasons, though, that did stand out for PAS is that they are available 24 hours a day. So if employees are having problems at 2:00 in the morning and they need advice, they can call, there's a number they can call 24/7, and they can get help from a licensed counselor over the telephone 24/7. Then they can, then get in-person appointments scheduled with any of the local providers. So all services, you know, face-to-face services would still be, still take place in the central Missouri area, but it adds that 24/7 opportunity for people to seek help. Currently, if somebody does need help outside regular business hours, they're, really their only option is to go to the emergency room. And then the other benefit that they offer is that it does give the employees flexibility of where they want to go. So we have, sometimes employees prefer to go somewhere else, and the current option is only one option, it's just one location. So if they know somebody that works there, or, you know, for whatever reason, they just are not comfortable going to that location, there's, they don't have any other options. So this is an option where employees can talk with somebody through PAS and get an appointment scheduled at a location that they're comfortable with. So, so obviously, then services would still be rendered in the central Missouri area, so they're still getting the business locally. They would just be getting paid through PAS rather than through us. If that makes sense.
So what would council? What would council like to do? So I would need a motion to either take up item F. Yes. Councilwoman Ward?
Do those providers include Cap Region, or did you say earlier there were no Cap Region in, in the selection of providers?
Right. In the 23 that is currently in the network, Capital Region is not included. They did put in their proposal that if selected, that they would try to get Capital Region
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to move to approve the EAP agreement.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Councilwoman Ward?
What does city staff feel? Do you know? Has there been a survey? Is there been discussion? Are they wanting, are there complaints about not having the 24/7 service? Is that a need? You know?
We, I mean, we have not put, since once we got this, these proposals, we did not do any type of a survey out to all the staff, no. But we did have a committee made up of representatives of four different departments. And, you know, the representatives from those departments definitely felt strongly about that 24/7 option and the option of the flexibility as to where they want to go. None of that is anything against Capital Region, though.
Top service.
Any further questions or discussion? Councilman Mahalovich?
How many, how many are, what percentage do our current employees take advantage of this EAP?
Our utilization typically is about 6% to 8% per year.
Like that utilization was going up? That we were hearing positive results and that it was, there were more and more people availing them as a service. Has the usage been going up, down, or steady?
It's stayed very steady over the years.
Okay. And it seems to me that if PA, if 24-hour-a-day service was a, was an important factor for our decision, our recommendation here, that we would have included that within the RFP to require that of all the vendors. So that being an element that made it decided, does that mean that they were in, in the evaluation? Did they, others say they couldn't offer that, or they just had volunteered that that would be a thing that they would have?
It was, one of the questions was, one of the questions in the proposal asked about availability. So it was not made as a requirement.
Thank you.
Councilman Fitzwater?
In your discussions with them, were you pretty confident that they were interested in legitimately pursuing Capital Region as a partner?
Yes. I felt very comfortable about that.
Thank you.
Councilman Hussey?
Can I ask, I mean, this gets into the weeds. I mean, this is an employee assistance program that an employee has so many sessions they're permitted to use within a year, correct? That's included. If an employee was desiring to seek counseling services and needed further, you know, counseling sessions, like, is that something covered on our health insurance program already? And at that point in time, would that employee have the ability to seek those services at Capital Region separate from the EAP program?
Yes, they would. So the health insurance plan does include those services. It would just be subject to deductible and copay.
Yep.
And yes, then they could use the network, and the health insurance is a much broader network.
Okay. So it's not as though we are restricting employees from continuing to see a counselor or receive services from Capital Region under the benefits package that's offered by the city? It's just a change here. And I, I think this came, was it three years ago, or was it even further back when we discussed? I feel like it's been four or five years.
I think it has been three years.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a long three years. And I think at that time, the PAS proposal was different, wasn't it? I felt like it wasn't as much one-on-one counseling sessions, local with the network of providers. The concern was that the opportunity for local was not, I don't know if I'm wrong in that, but it felt like it was pushing it more towards phone and video as opposed to sitting face-to-face with somebody locally. Is that accurate, or am I just?
No, I don't think that that's really changed.
Okay. Well, I mean, with that said, I, last time, and I don't know, have, have the other, the other entities that submitted proposals been informed that they were not selected or not recommended?
No, they have not.
But maybe that's the hangup. I don't remember, I, I know the last time Capital Region advocated for continuation of the service and made the case, it seems as though they're not even aware then that they were not chosen. Is that a correct statement? Or they were not, they have not been made, made aware by the city that they did not receive the staff's recommendation for this?
They have not been made aware by human resources or finance department.
I don't think they could until this vote has been taken.
Well, I guess my point would be that they could be made aware that a staff was going to send forth a recommendation to the city that was not them. Like, that could be communicated. It's a public document.
But.
All of those things.
But if that was stated to, to Cap Region, for example, if a staff employee did say that, and then actions by this body that makes it official says something opposite, then I think it puts mud in that staff person's face, so I hope they wouldn't do nothing like that.
Well, I guess I disagree a little bit, just, it's on the agenda, it's a public document. There's nothing that says that staff couldn't communicate to those other entities that put forward submissions to say that Monday night's council meeting, the council's going to consider a staff's recommendation. I mean.
But until it's been approved by this body, you could have 50 people named on that list.
Mr. Kroll?
Okay, Ms. Stroke, we did have to get an extension with Capital Region for service, didn't we? So you had to?
We did. Our contract with Capital Region is, runs through the end of February, February 29th, which was an extension. It was originally until December 31st.
Councilman Mahalovich?
One last question. So an individual that's seeking assistance from a counselor, after February, will have to choose a different counselor to seek assistance? If they're a Capital Region?
Right. Not necessarily. It depends, I, you know, I don't know what the process is and what the timeframe would be in order for Capital Region to be added to the network. I don't know if Capital Region is willing to or wants to, you know, so I can't speak to any of that. So it would all depend on what, you know, if they were brought into the network or
Any further questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye? Or should we do a roll call? Let's, let's do a roll call on this.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Abstain.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Nay.
Prather?
Schreiber?
Abstain.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay. Motion passes. Before we do item 12, bills introduced, I did say that after two hours, we would take a five-minute break, so keep going. Nobody needs a break. Okay. Sonny might, I think I, okay. Okay. Item 12, this, this is introduced, 2019-85.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 by modifying Schedule A speed limits and Schedule D one-way roads to match existing signage.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This is a cleanup ordinance of our code for speed limits and one-way roads is discovered during some emergency service planning, so happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Item 2019-86.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 by modifying Schedule K school crosswalk and Schedule S loading zone to match proposed improvements in City-County Project 32151 East High Street improvements for 2020.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And just as the clerk indicated, this is a cleanup to match our project on East High.
Any questions? 2019-87.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 by adding a time limit zone on the southeast side of the 600 block of Marshall Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This would add a 90-minute time limit zone to this area. There's a barber shop in the area that requested it, and they went through transportation and traffic, and recommend, they recommend approval to the council.
Any questions? 2019-88.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the city of Jefferson by extending the parking restriction on the south side of Madeline Place.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This is somewhat of a cleanup, but there's a very narrow street, Madeline Place, doesn't meet the standard for parking on two sides of the street, and so at the request of some property owners in that area, this would limit the parking to one side of the street.
Any questions? 2019-89.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County setting procedures for joint city and county capital improvement sales tax projects.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Another typical city-county agreement for a project, a joint project we're doing together, the East High Street project that we just actually mentioned, but that, that project would go from basically Locust out to McCarty Street, and it's gonna be reconstructing the sidewalks on High Street and various things around it, such as retaining walls and curb and gutter, some, some sanitary sewer, stormwater, things of that nature. But anyway, this would be the agreement between the city and Cole County to come to terms on how it would be paid for.
Any questions? 2019-90.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Midwest ATC Service Incorporated for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, our agreement with Midwest ATC, it's always late coming, obviously, so we're talking about, started back in July, and it kind of runs through the federal government, but we pay about 18% in this contract of that service, which is roughly $91,000. That's in the city budget already. In the end, we also get a reimbursement of this cost through another grant, MoDOT grant, for around $50,000. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? 2019-91.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, submitting an amendment to the Charter of the city of Jefferson relating to prohibitions and incompatible offices to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This bill would place a ballot measure before the voters of Jefferson City at the April 7, 2020 general municipal election. The question put before the voters would ask to amend the charter to make two changes to Article 12 of the, of the charter. First change, under Section 12.2 prohibitions, would prohibit council, former council members and former mayors from accepting compensated or point of positions with the city until at least two years have passed since leaving office. The second prohibition, also in 12.2, would prohibit council members, the mayor, city administrator, city clerk, department directors, and members of the Parks and Recreation Commission from also serving as publicly elected governing body members of other political subdivisions in statewide elected offices or in the Missouri General Assembly during their office term. This prohibition would not apply where such person is serving on governmental, other governmental positions in their role as a city official. So this would go at the April 7 general municipal election.
Any questions? Councilman Hesse?
Just for clarification, I, I think I heard on, on the first one, you said two years after they leave office, but technically it's two years after the expiration of the term which they were elected. So, right? If I'm reading...
Correct.
That if a mayor were to resign one month, or one year into her terms, term of office, she has to wait two years after the completion of that four-year term?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? 2019-92.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, submitting an amendment to the Charter of the city of Jefferson relating to residency requirements for the city administrator, city clerk, and city counselor to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This bill would submit to the voters of Jefferson City a change to the charter relating to residency requirements for the offices of the city clerk, city administrator, and city counselor. What this would do would amend these, various sections relating to these three offices such that all three offices would be required to have a residence within the city. If someone outside the city were hired, the, the people hired would, would have a six-month grace period to relocate into the city after appointment, and then also provides that the city council can provide an additional six-month period for, for that to, to take place. So essentially, if someone gets hired into the position, doesn't currently live in the city, they have six months to move in, or up to a year, but no more than a year if approved by the city council.
Any questions? 2019-93.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, submitting an amendment to the Charter of the city of Jefferson relating to legislative proceedings to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson.
Mr. Moulman?
Uh, thank you. So this bill would send to the voters of Jefferson City a amendment to the city charter relating to legislative procedures. First, this changes the, the charter so that it designating that all bills would have a primary bill sponsor and multiple cosponsors, but cosponsors would not have the same powers as a primary bill sponsor. For example, only the bill, primary bill sponsor may place a bill on the informal calendar, but either the primary bill sponsor singularly, or a majority of the council may pull a bill off of the informal calendar. Secondly, there's another change that would codify current city practice that any single member of the city council can call for full reading of a bill that is implied in the city charter. This change would, would codify that practice. The next change would also codify a current city practice of allowing any council member to request a suspension of the rules requiring 96 hours between first reading and final passage. Once again, currently, this authority to request such the rule is, is only implied within the, within the charter. This would codify it and effectuate it formally. Next, the, the next proposed amendment specifies that bills are placed immediately on the informal calendar. This is consistent with the current charter language that contemplates that bills placed on the informal calendar can be pulled off and disposed of in the same meeting. So generally, it is practiced to wait until the next meeting until, until a, until a item is pulled off of the informal calendar. However, the current city charter does contemplate that bills could be placed on the informal calendar, which is later in the agenda, and then pulled back off of the informal calendar in the, in the same meeting. This, once again, this is a clarification, a codification of what is contemplated within the, within the city charter. And then finally, the proposed amendment deletes the term, lie upon the table. I believe that the, the Charter Review Committee thought this was an archaic term and was looking for more clear, clear language to express what happens to a bill after it dies on the informal calendar.
Councilman Hesse?
I don't have a question, more of just a statement that for these to be on the, well, I guess my question, these to be on the April ballot, action needs to be taken by the next council meeting?
By the, by the next council meeting.
Okay. So which is January 21st?
21st. The following Tuesday is the deadline for, for submission of items for the April.
And I would just add that, you know, the Charter Committee, a citizen committee that really dug deep on these issues met in the spring into the summer of 2018. This body contemplated some of these, we placed some items on the ballot last April and made the decision to have a thorough review of these by the administration committee. So I would just urge my colleagues that, there are three here on the bills introduced. I believe there's one on bills pending tonight. Really dig deep and take a look at these things before the next meeting so that, you know, they're, if you're opposed to it, I completely respect that. I would just hope at this point that there's not opposition in two weeks to some of these because there hasn't been time to really contemplate and consider these things. I think that there's been due diligence done by the administration committee, the Charter Committee, and this body, and so I would just ask for full consideration, and let's just, let's take these up and, and I applaud Councilwoman Weisman and the administration committee for doing a thorough look, and, and Mr. Moulman for really digging deep. So we sat here a year ago, and I felt like there was some hesitancy just because it felt rushed, and so we've had a lot of time here to consider these, and these proposals look a little bit different than they did a year ago, thanks to the work of the committee to really fine-tune. So just asking for consideration and let's move forward if we so desire on these bills.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman Mahalovich?
If, it, it seems to me we had some of the benefit of the, of the Charter Committee so that they give this rationale. They're still, having seen this and get it refreshed, I do appreciate the, the committee's work, but I still, there's a few of those I just don't see that we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. So I would have question, I guess I'll apply it to you, to those that are on the committee, but is there any benefit having anybody from the Charter Committee there? Because it looks like we're, in a few cases, we're trying to solve a problem that really has never come up and never existed, or doesn't seem to be a, a problem for my chair.
I guess my follow-up would be to be more specific. Like, I don't, what specifically in the proposals do you feel like are solution in search of a problem? Because I think it'd be easier to talk about the rationale on some of those.
Well, specifically, the bill, how the handler, the person that's sponsoring the bill and the ability to take it off the table or, or to put it on, suspend rules, and that procedural thing, I have to read the specific language how it's changed, but it, it didn't seem to garner enough to, to have a change, it didn't seem to me.
I would just argue that it kind of codifies practice a little bit to avoid situations where it's questionable as to whether or not the council can take that action or not, but I would leave it to Ryan.
Um, yeah, so, to the, first of all, I just want to say, the procedure section of the city charter works pretty well, and I think the main problem with the, with subsection E here is that there's a lot that is inferred in the process. And I'll give you probably the best example of that, is that Section E refers to sponsors. And so, so, and I, I think, I think that if you take a look at Section E3, that it refers to, that a sponsor may, may lay bills on the informal calendar. But nowhere in the procedures prior to that is our sponsors ever mentioned. And so what you have is an inference that there should be a sponsor because a sponsor has certain powers, but no declaration of how, what, or even authority for there to be a sponsor. And so it's inferred that there's a sponsor, but there's, I'll tell you, there's nothing in state law that requires a council sponsor, and so that is a, that is a assumption that resides with our city charter that there would be, would be a sponsor, but nothing requires a sponsor. So essentially, what we have now are powers to a person that isn't required to exist under the charter. Now, we require sponsors under, under the administrative code, but when the charter talks about sponsors, the, the thought was is that, well, there should be some authority to establish a sponsor, and so that's what this attempts to do. It says each bill will have a single primary sponsor and unlimited cosponsors, but those two people won't have the same powers. And so then it designates, well, what's the difference? A primary sponsor can lay a bill on the table without anyone else's permission or say so. And so, so that is, that's kind of the prime example of what's contained here. And, and so once again, it's, it's the, it's the actions that are inferred in these procedures without ever establishing the basic requisites of how you get to that inference. And so that's what we're, what we're trying to do, is establish the basic fundamentals of, 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 okay, of course, of course you can suspend the rules, any member can suspend the rules because it says that, 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 well, it infers that the rules can be suspended. It says, absent the suspension of the rules, bills have to be separated by 96 hours, but it never says who can suspend the rules. And so there's an inference that any council member can do it, but what this change does is, is say, any council member can do it, and you're no longer relying on the inference. And so that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish, is, is that, that these procedures rely on inferences too much.
Councilman Fitzwater, and then Weisman?
My comment is, and I appreciate the comments from Councilman Hesse, and I think the Review Committee discussed, my comment is in regard to 311E3. And I think there's good with, within this document. I still just personally am uncomfortable with the process. I think the bill handler ought to have control over the bill, and I, I don't like the provision that allows another process to pull it off the informal. I mean, my opposition's not big enough to drag the bill, but just trying to lay it out there. I, I don't think it initially came, I don't think anybody came to one of the Review Committees with that as an adamant goal. I think through discussions, they kind of backed into that language, and I think, you know, I appreciated their, their comments on it, and I think, I don't, I don't know if that's what you were referring to. I, I think we solved a problem that wasn't there. I'm not saying it's good or bad that we solved it. I personally don't like it, but again, I don't think it's enough to take the whole thing down, but I'm just uncomfortable with that piece of it. So I agree, I mean, I think there's a couple of things in there. And again, I, I think that the Review Committee come up with this language, finally, I'm not sure how it got on the discussion table.
So context would be, there was charter amendments two years ago, one of which was related to the Fireman's Pension Fund, that Councilwoman Weisman was the bill sponsor, she asked for it to be on the informal. I believe a motion might have been made by Councilman Mahalovich to actually take it off the informal and was recognized and approved by this council. And so the practice was, the council could buy a majority vote, take any bill off the informal calendar against the wishes of the bill sponsor. That caught the attention of members of the Charter Review Committee who had served on this council previously, or served as mayor previously, to say, well, that wasn't quite the practice back in our day. Well, nothing had changed in the written document about how, I mean, this section hadn't been amended. It was just an interpretation, I believe, of that section and a practice 25, 30 years prior on the council. And so it caught the attention of the chair of that committee, Mr. Heckenberg who had served, Ms. McDowell who had served, to say, well, that could have never happened back in our day, type mindset. And so I think we backed into that as a topic based on the actions of this council related to that particular amendment to the, or the bill before us at that particular time. And I would say that if we made no change to this section, my assumption would be that Mr. Moulman here would recognize that his interpretation would say that the council does have the authority to take a bill off the informal calendar by a majority vote of this body.
It's actually been codified into the administrative code, so that is the correct interpretation under both the charter and the administrative code.
Councilwoman Weisman?
So our issue with not clearing up some...
So our issue with not clearing up some of these inferences is just that, and, and if council is okay with this, this is, this is fine, vote no. But the, the issue with not clearing up some of these inferences is, let's pretend our, our counselor over there decides to resign tomorrow, and we get a new counselor in two weeks. Our new counselor can advise us of absolutely different procedures that, that maybe we don't like, and we, you know, are essentially bound by them, because that's what they're telling us. And so by, by codifying these and putting this into writing what, what we've, what we've been doing, if Counselor Moleman does not, you know, if he resigns tomorrow and two weeks from now we get a new, a new counselor, he has to go by everything that the public has voted on. He has to, everything that's been codified, he has to abide by. He, he doesn't have a choice. And 10 people who get elected in two years also have to go by that charter. They don't have a choice, so things can't change. And so I, I think it's what your preference is. Is it okay if it changes, or do you want it to stay the same?
Councilman Hussey?
I guess I would add that, I mean, to address your point then, Councilman Fitzwater, would be to do the opposite in the language. That in the absence of a prohibition of that activity, I think the interpretation would be that a majority vote of the council is authorized to take a vote and take said action on, unless it's prohibited from doing so, or requires a higher threshold to take said action. Um, if you got six votes, then that can certainly happen. But I know that we ran down the rabbit hole then of, what if the budget needs to be passed, and the budget sponsor is not at that meeting, or if there's a, I mean, it's, you can find a lot of scenarios where if we, you know, tied the hands of the council to take something off the informal when action needed to be taken, we're potentially in a very challenging situation, and that by codifying that ability, maybe, maybe that's the, a positive step. But I see Councilman Hensley's got his hand up, so.
Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, I recognize that this conversation started before I joined the council almost two years ago. Um, but if, if the problem to be solved is something dying due to the absence of the, uh, the sponsor, um, maybe we can tailor the language a little bit more to solve for the problem, without opening up a whole new problem. Um, you know, maybe something along the lines of, uh, requiring the absence, and, you know, in, in the case of the absence, but with the consent communicated somehow, maybe to the clerk, um, in writing, um, you know, just then maybe the majority of the council could, could bring it up. Maybe that's a way to get the problem without causing bigger issues. But I recognize I haven't been here for the entire discussion.
Any further discussion on the bill? No? Mr. Moleman?
I think staff's position is more, is, is less about how the inferences are answered, um, more as we'd like the inferences answered. So, so I don't think the result from a staff level is, is as important as, as having the more formalized procedure set forth in the charter, whatever those procedures may be.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Hensley?
I have a question on a, a different item, um, the incompatible offices, uh, item. Is there allowance in there for a grace period for folks who might suddenly find themselves holding two incompatible offices if that passes?
Uh, no, and, and, um, this is consistent with state law regarding incompatible offices. State law, um, holds that when someone accepts a new office that is incompatible with their previous office, that previous office is automatically forfeited. And so, so-
No, I'm, sorry, and just to be clear in case I wasn't, um, someone who right now holds two offices-
Oh, yeah.
-who upon the effective date of this passing would suddenly find themselves holding incompatible offices?
Correct, and, and so, so the answer is, is a little complicated. Um, the, the other charter changes that, um, the other charter changes that are in the bills pending include a grandfathering clause, which essentially says, if for whatever reason changes in the charter cause a person to no longer have the qualifications of the office, um, that does not kick them out automatically, they can serve out the remainder of the term. Um, so those are actually in a different charter, uh, change, so, but I would give you, uh, the scenario, if, if those charter provisions did not pass, and, and these did, um, for example, I believe that case law would demand that they be able to, uh, serve out that term. And so either way, I think they would be either protected by the express language of the charter, or by case law that essentially says you cannot, you cannot cut off the term of a public office, um, absent the, um, the destruction of that office. You can't cut off someone and say, you're no longer in this office unless you just get rid of the office completely, which we are not contemplating at all. So, I think it's a double protection.
So they'd be able, I guess, to continue serving out whichever of their terms, uh, had, had the least remaining time, and then when they got to the end of that term, decide really which office they wanted to hold?
So, so this only, this only governs city-elected offices, so this would have no bearing on, on their other office. And so, so to the, if someone were to, you know, fill out the remainder of their term, and then on the, you know, on the, on the day after, um, their term expires, they're still holding that other government office, they would no longer be eligible to, to be, to hold that office.
Okay.
They're allowed, if I may, they're allowed to complete the term of office that this considers city official park board member. Once somebody's park board term expires-
Mm-hmm.
-they can't be reappointed if they're holding an incompatible office. That's what you're trying to get to.
And just for that one term, right? Let's say they're finishing their first or second term, or currently serving their first or second term, they get to the end of that, they would not be allowed to run, or to be appointed for a subsequent term?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, good discussion there. Uh, 201994.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $1,033,710 agreement with Capital Paving and Construction LLC for the Missouri Riverbank Stabilization Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And as you'll notice, we also have a checkmark there, where, uh, staff is requesting to suspend the rules and approve this tonight. Uh, we've talked about this at a Public Works and Planning Committee at least twice that I'm aware of, uh, but the little over a million dollar contract capital paving, but basically, uh, we have a sewer line that's, uh, being exposed by the river, uh, near Wares Creek, and this project will stabilize that, and we're trying to get that done before any spring rise in the river. And so right now, we're at a favorable condition for that, and, uh, this, uh, contract would also be potentially, partly at least, covered by FEMA reimbursement, we believe.
Great, any objections to suspend the rules? Uh, Councilman Hussey?
I guess I'm not objecting, I'm actually asking for a suspension of the rules.
Okay. Well, make the ask, and then any objections, seeing none, we'll take up, uh, 201994. Any further deliberation or discussion?
Question.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Oh.
And then, sorry, and then Graham?
Is there any assurances from the Corps that they'll, um, they'll fill in the wing dyke so that this won't continue to occur? Because it was, it was good until they made the cut in the wing dyke.
Um, you know, there's a lot of difference of opinion on that, of course, and, um, I think that discussion's carrying on up and down the river, if you've probably read articles about this in the newspaper, but, uh, certainly, the, uh, um, you know, it's, it's, we believe it's somewhat caused by that issue, but, uh, uh, the Corps maybe has a different opinion on that. This will stabilize it permanently, these are rather large boulders, uh, you know, they're a special run at the quarry, uh, so it, we consider it a permanent solution.
Uh, Councilman Graham?
I just had a question. Uh, TEB Civil, Inc., is that a new company?
Uh, I don't believe it's a new company, it's, um, been around for a while.
It's just odd that they did not, um, they weren't able to acquire a performance bond.
Well, now, on this particular project, it was widely advertised up, you know, with people who do a lot of work on the river, and so we had a lot of people look into it. Um, you know, it's just, it's an expensive project, may have just been too big for them for some reason.
But, but, they, they were the lowest bid at 931,000, so if, if that was the case, why would they even bid on it then?
I'm not, I'm not sure about their bonding capacity, it's just what they relayed to us, for sure.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Graham?
Aye.
Graham? Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, 201995.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way of Morningside Drive and various storm water and sanitary sewer easements in the vicinity of Orchard Heights subdivision.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And this is kind of a property cleanup, uh, on this particular property. It's on, uh, East McCarty, just east of the Rock Cut, so, uh, the most recent, uh, our plat that was done in 2006 contemplated a subdivision there, and that plat was actually never filed, that the county wants it approved by the city, so it's set vacant for a long time. Uh, now there's a new developer has come along, purchased that property, Mr. Loggie, who's done a couple subdivisions in the city recently, and intends to reconfigure it some and have another, different look of a subdivision in the same location. So, this would vacate the right-of-ways and easements that were, are in place on the property, so that he can, uh, start over.
Any questions? Item 13, bills pending, 201980.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Apex Incorporated in the amount of $2,413,874 for the East High Street Improvements 2020 project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, and, and this is a pro, project I alluded to earlier, this city-county project, um, that would rebuild the sidewalks and the various other infrastructure surrounding them, uh, retaining walls, curb and gutter, storm water. Uh, there's also a sanitary sewer component, they're often joint-in contracts so they can get some economy of scale here, so I believe there's actually a considerable amount of sanitary sewer work on this, uh, approaching almost a half million dollars of it. But, uh, this, again, city-county project, we just talked about the agreement to split the cost with the county, and this was in our, uh, long been discussed, uh, by the groups.
Thank you, Councilman Mahalovich.
Yeah, this is another one of those bids that I, I, I have trouble with from a standpoint of a couple of things, is we don't have a valuation of, of past performance of our bidders, uh, that I'm aware of a formal, to assess whether or not we want to continue. Now, this company, I don't know that has a good record or, or poor record, I assume they have a decent record, um, I think I've heard good things about them, but, um, I think he's spelled Lynn with a, with an L next time. Uh, but anyway, the, um, the, uh, we just heard from another presentation about, um, EAP services, and we gave them a favorable, uh, evaluation as a past performance, but we don't really use that to, to give us judgment on whether or not to accept a bid or not. Uh, I've not talked to any of these companies, uh, but, but I certainly think that there's something to be valued by, a all-things-being equal bid, where if, if a company can, um, and I don't want to chill outside competition, but if a company can prove that they have employees in our city and county, uh, community, if they can prove that they have, they're paying, you know, they're paying property tax, they have personnel, uh, this company happens to be, Apex has zero dollars that they spend on personal property or tax, but Schneiders spent 86,000 last year, and Stockman 100 and, excuse me, strike that. Uh, Schneiders paid 22,000 dollars, and Stockman paid 14,000 dollars, that's every year. And so it doesn't take long to, to, to equalize these bids. So, um, I, uh, I would like to accept, uh, the second bid on, uh, from Don Schneiders. And I'm going to put that in the form of a motion. I'd move that we, uh, we move that, uh, contract to Don Schneiders' construction.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
I, well, I guess my discussion would be, I mean, I understand the case that you're making, Councilman Mahalovich, but, I mean, it's a pretty big pivot, and it sends a extremely dangerous precedent, I think, to have staff go through a, a bid process, end up with the lowest and best offer, and at this level, the only reasoning for changing said bid is property tax paid in this county. Um, you know, I mean, I, are, are we going to get to the point where we ask companies to submit a list of where their employees live, and where those employees spend their money, so that they can prove that those employees might, while they may live in Lynn, come to Jefferson City, and this is what they spend in sales tax? Like, I mean, we've been through this before, and I get it, but at this point, to sort of, to shift in that way calls into question this entire process. I believe before, with a large construction bid related to the stadium in Jefferson Roundabout, there was the similar conversation, but at that point in time, there was MoDOT money attached to it, and so there was no ability to offer a local preference option because MoDOT views it as state of Missouri. Um, but I, I guess I can't support this motion and make a pivot like that, and a change like that without some greater justification, or proof that Apex is not a credible company, or somehow we've had the wool pulled over our eyes related to their bid.
Councilman Hensley, and then Fitzwater?
Thank you, and to piggyback on that, or, or at least a formal change in our process, I mean, we're awarding the contract now, and it, it kind of sounds like we might be considering shifting the, um, uh, terms of the award, um, at, at sort of a late hour, so, um, yeah, I'm not comfortable with that either.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Well, I would just echo the comment, comments of my eloquent colleagues. I, we have a process, we ask staff to follow that. I am all about trying to support local businesses, but I agree with Councilman Hensley. Why, I mean, we would do this on every item that comes to this council in the future, if that's the route we're going to go. Now, if we want to talk about changing the process, I agree, I'm, I'm willing to do that, but we use the process that was in place, or staff did, and I would not be comfortable supporting this motion.
Councilman Schreiber?
In my opinion, the process, process should stand as it is.
Councilman Graham?
I just have a question. Um, during our evaluation process, or during our, um, initial, uh, RFPs, uh, do we give any extra points to WBE or MBE businesses?
On this particular type-
Any, any bid for the city, because we've got some nice, huge amount of bids going out, and I'm just, I just want to make sure that we are including WBE and MBE as relates to, uh, our evaluation process. If that's something we need to-
If I can answer a couple of different ways, uh, so we do a lot of the bidding, you know, I mean, other groups do too, but as far as construction contracts and things, uh, so if we're doing a federal, if it has federal money in it, like a MoDOT project, uh, there is a specific amount allotted to that through the federal process, and, or maybe a transit project, or some of those things where we have some federal money mingled in. This happens to be all local money, and so we do have a goal, uh, finance has a goal of looking at that. Um, actually, uh, Apex is a minority-owned business, um, minority women-owned business, certified through the state. Now, we don't take that into account on this whole project, but, uh, they're allowed to do that. Now, this isn't a proposal, this was a bid, and so we just took the bids. Um, so the, the project was set, and then they bid it like it was. Now, you, you mentioned proposals, sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't, depending on what the funding source is and things of that nature.
Okay.
All right, and anybody else can chime in, but that's kind of how we operate through the city code.
Further questions?
Which, which committee would that, would that go back to for, for, uh, look, to be looked at? That's the, which-
Well, that's a finance, uh, purchasing code, I guess, so...
Any further questions or discussion? So at this time, we'll have roll call on the motion.
To accept.
Yes. Do you have it there? You want to recap that?
This is the motion to accept the bid award of Schneider's excavating.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
No.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Wiseman?
No.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, so now we'll take up twenty nineteen eighty. Is that right? Okay. Any further discussion on twenty nineteen eighty, which was the original bill? Okay, roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty nineteen eighty-one.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Burns and McDonnell for the purpose of designing the replacement of various lighting fixtures for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, and just as the clerk indicated, this is a engineering agreement to design the, redesign the lighting at the airport damaged during the flood, and we have to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty nineteen eighty-two.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter Eight Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Five, Property Maintenance Pertaining to Heat Supply.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill addresses an oversight that occurred during the adoption of the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. There are regional differences where they basically have blanks that you fill in. In this one, we did not address the blanks. We basically, for a heat supply, are going to require or recommending that it is provided between September one and June one throughout the year. And I'd like to clarify my response to Councilman Prather at the last meeting when he asked about would landlords have to pay for this and whatnot. The property code already requires functioning heating during certain times of the year, and that is a responsibility of however the lease agreement is, in terms of, does a renter pay for the gas or the electricity? The property owner has to maintain that. This heat supply is more of a, sort of a central system. I think of it as if I lived in a fourplex with a boiler and have a radiator or some sort of thermostat, the landlord is responsible for making sure that boiler is working and functioning, and I'm able to use it at that time. So I just want to clarify that this is not requiring property owners to actually pay for and turn the heat on just to provide functioning heat, or in this case, have the heat working where they can turn it on. I'd be glad to answer any questions or go into that further.
Councilman Hensley?
Thanks. And similarly, it doesn't require that the dwelling actually have at all times a temperature of sixty-eight degrees or above, particularly if the tenant does not wish for the temperature in the home to be sixty-eight degrees, simply that the equipment that is provided is capable and functioning in order to provide at least sixty-eight degrees internal temperature. Is that right?
Correct.
Great, thanks.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty nineteen eighty-three. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving and amended and restated charter of the City of Jefferson, and submit such charter to a vote of citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This bill would submit to the voters of Jefferson City a change to the various provisions of the city charter. These provisions mostly came to the city council as a result of the Charter Review Advisory Committee. They also went back through the administration committee last summer. Changes included within this, within this ordinance include using gender-neutral language throughout the charter, eliminating references to dates that are no longer effective, changing the dates on which candidate qualifications are measured from the election date to the date of filing, and then capitalizing the word "city" throughout the document when referring to the City of Jefferson itself. Specific changes to the charter proposes changes to Section 6.3 and 4.1, which would add incapacity as a reason for removal for council members and the mayor, changes to Section 4.1(c), which specifies that the mayor may not hold any other city office or employment within the city. This is the same prohibition that currently relates to council members. Section 4.1d relates to removal of the mayor. The language would mirror the reasons for removal of the mayor as, the same as those applicable to council members, except that it would take a forfeits vote of the council to remove the mayor. Section 4.4 amends, adds a new subsection 11 to 4.4, which provides that the mayor has the authority to remove members of committees, boards, or commissions for misconduct or neglected duty. This is essentially taking authority that is scattered throughout city code and centralizing it in one place as it relates to the mayor's authority to remove committee and commission members. Amendments to Section 5.1 clarifies that the city administrator's entire compensation, and not just salary, is approved by the mayor and a majority of the council, or two-thirds majority vote of the council. Sections 5.2 are clarifications to duties of the city administrator. Amendments to Section 6.5 would change the title of the city councillor to the city Changes to Section 12.9, 12.9 would simplify how time is calculated within the charter. Sorry, this provision sets a default rule of using calendar days, if not expressed otherwise in the charter or in city code. Currently, we have a system where the, the method of counting depends on the deadline, whether or not it's within thirty days or not. This simplifies that. And then, section, changes to Section 3.5 specify that current elected appointed officials continue to hold their office after city charter amendments take place until the end of their term. This is a grandfathering clause that we discussed with the, with the previous charter on the bills introduced. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the city council has.
Any questions? Councilman Wiseman?
I believe I need to make an amendment.
Yes, because this bill was introduced at the December second meeting, and the December eighteenth meeting was canceled, the ballot language contained in Proposition A refers to the bill being passed and approved at the city council meeting on December eighteenth, 2019. That appears on the front page of Bill Number 2019-083. That December eighteenth, 2019 date needs to be changed, assuming that it takes, is taken up tonight to December...
January.
January sixth, 2020. So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now we're going to take up the bill as amended.
Yes.
Any other discussion on the bill? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Bill passes, twenty nineteen eighty-four.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a two...
Taking down one or the other building in either order. So with that, the original price was two hundred eighty-three thousand for both buildings, the substitute, the cost would be two hundred sixty-eight thousand, and also allow us flexibility in taking one building down, or the other, in whichever order it happens to be. Be glad to answer any more questions on that.
Thank you. Any questions? Or comments from council? Councilman Hussey?
Madam Mayor, I'd ask to move this bill to the informal calendar due to continuing conversations between city staff and property owners.
Okay, there's been a request to, from the bill sponsor, to move that to the informal Item fourteen, informal calendar, twenty nineteen seventy-nine.
Leave it there.
Oops. Sorry. No, that's where we're at? Okay, I thought I was...
The John Hensley Garage Sale Bill can stay on the informal calendar.
Do you want to leave it? Oh, it's your bill, I'm sorry, it's Hussey's. So we're leaving that on the informal? Okay. Item fifteen, resolutions, twenty nineteen fifteen.
A resolution transferring previously unspent sales tax money into sales tax G.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As outlined in the resolution summary, there, we have two older funds for our sales tax D and E that we would like to just move the remaining projects. There are actually four projects that are outlined, and they would have the same title and dollar amount, just move to sales tax G. There is some residual, some interest earned in the sales tax D and E that would then be moved to the contingency line of sales tax G, and that's in round numbers, about sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions? And do we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Resolution passes, twenty nineteen sixteen.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri adopting policies and procedures for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a required document for our annual Community Development Block Grant Program. It basically serves two functions. One is it documents our policies for such things as finance, administration of the program, purchasing, federal compliance, and things like that. It's also a guide for the public to have a better understanding of what programs we offer, and what are the processes that we go through to administer those programs. This is a document that I would refer to as like Cliff Notes to the whole program that we administer under the Community Development Block Grant activity. Glad to answer any questions or go into more detail.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just had one. At what point would those, will funds be available through this CBG?
Yeah, we're on a weird yearly cycle. We just got our funds for this fiscal year, and we normally update, if you recall, we update the budget sort of halfway in between, so I believe we already have our 2020 funds that we can draw down right now. We are a little bit behind on drawing down funds. The tornado kind of hit us with a little bit of a whammy, so we're trying to catch up on our, on our ratio.
So we have applicants, people already starting to apply for these funds?
Oh, yeah, we did, actually, last year, at the end of the fiscal year, we were able to process twenty-five Down Payment Assistance Programs. That's one of our most popular programs, and we are processing those right now as we, you know, currently, I've been signing off some of those, and Steve's been getting them too. So our goal's twenty-five more of those, and we also have a construction project that Jamie's working with Public Works down along the Jackson Street area for infrastructure improvements.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Say.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Resolution passes, item sixteen, we have no presentations. Councilman Mahalovich?
I get it from the folks here with regard to the process followed, and then changing things at the last moment and, and put you in the bad light. I didn't mean to do that in terms of not, not supporting local business, I know you do that, so I'm going to direct the councillor to, to explore bills and, and methods we